...call meeting, October first, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. White, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Let's pray. We want to thank you, God, for using this day and making God for many blessings alive. God, you've given us journey now that we're so thankful, God, for our school, our school system, our community. God, we just want to thank you, God, for your protection and hand, God, that you laid upon us last week or so, God. God, we just want to also pray, God, for all the, our surrounding neighbors and surrounding communities. And God, that has seen such devastation over the course of the past few days. God, we just pray, God, that you help us, that God will know how to mitigate those, but how to help. God, we just want to pray, God, that you just leave now their discussion that's had this morning. God, pray, God, for each and every one of us, God, that work with the children, God, in our school system. God, that you just give us the wisdom, God, what we need to make the decisions, God, that we make each and every day. God, I want to pray, God, for our board, God, pray, God, that you just be able to make the decision as best for our students and our community. We do love you, we thank you, we praise you, God, for all that you do. This is your ask and prayer.
For the pledge this morning, the Robbinsville Elementary School, I know that you're Samantha Guffey's twin daughters, but would you introduce yourself and tell what grade you're in? Fourth grade, and you're Rayly, Paley, and Re- no.
Rayland.
Rayland and Paley. Okay, all right, go ahead and lead us into the pledge.
I am a student of the United States of America and a student of God, with his hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, God, if you see it. Yeah, you all go back to work. I've got an article that I want to read to y'all, that I, I read this when the paper came out, and the title is Need to Pray. We need our world to pray more, and we need to pray for everyone, even our enemies. And we can start helping the world by changing our talent. That's how we can start. And we can even read our Bible at least one time a day. Please, everyone, help me with this. We need to change the world. There's a bunch of people in the world that don't believe in God, and we need to help them. And I hope that everyone that reads this will spread kindness. This was written by a ten-year-old fifth grader. Her name is, I hope I pronounce it right, Kimberly Bart from Santee. And I, Mr. White, I know you know who this is, so that that's, that's something that really touched my heart when I read it. It really touched my heart when I found out how old the little girl was, so. All right. Approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Carolyn Nelson, ready to give about the agenda? I'm just curious as to why we have, just tell me, because it needs to be. I don't know why we have facility property and commissioner updates in closed session when I thought we had a discussion that no session. Do you know, sir?
Which, which one?
Closed session, facilities, property, commissioner updates, Daniel Matheson, it's in closed session.
Can you let me answer that? Yeah, it's dealing with competency challenge things that does not mean put on.
Well, I kind of saw that, and I wasn't actually sure. I thought it'd be still assured.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot to that, so.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
No.
Do I have a say? Say, all in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting? So, do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Klein, do we have any people signed up for the comment? Do I have a motion to close another time here? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, unfortunate discussion items. We have already had a packet and read all of the administrative updates, discussions, and questions. Are, if there are any questions, please ask them now. Okay, we, we don't close now.
No, I'm holding cover of one thing to actually field trips.
Okay, all right. Room number three, fee, field trips and volunteer policy.
That's the one in the packet, CTE is responsible. Needs approval, I'll send the entry to high school.
Oh, there he is, behind me.
That's all.
Yes, okay.
And then I'll talk about the volunteer, well, there's been, just played volunteer policy, so there are some business sessions. Now, we, we welcome parents to go and field trips, basically, you know, once a year, and there. At the same time, if they're going to be involved around other kids, children that are on children, we, we've been asking them to do a volunteer packet. Do something, have a background check. And again, it's not that personal, but family instruction on that, and we don't know who they are, and if it's field trip off our side, it's field considered school flunking. We want to make sure everybody's on the, if they're going to be around the kids. So I just want to make that clear. There's been some questions about that for some business or two. I talk to them, they look at the thing, and we'll have us to ask, but I just want to say that that's our policy, what we do. If anybody didn't see somebody else's child, whether it's on a bus, field trip in the building, they need to go to a volunteer packet. And I'm sorry, I was just saying, we're moving, and we want to make sure that's safe. So I just want to clear that up before we.
Do I have a motion to approve the CTE field trip as presented, and it's not? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, school improvement plans approval. Ms. Mintz, do you have anything to add? Okay, sure.
In your packets, you have what it says, our direction. I'll be giving you some information of, this is our district overall improvement plan, which ties down to the school improvement plans at each school level. So we'll start today with our district overall plan. And I would like to say, before I get started, Mr. Matheson, what you said, changing the world. We are changing this whole path in the right direction, I believe, and I, I think that you could hear that from all of our administrative team as I reflect upon this thing a little while. I would like to share with you on that first page, page, our vision, and that is to engage, inspire, and empower every student, every gate. So with that said, I would kind of read through some of it, if you could read on, which is, a lot of this is needs assessment for our district, which would include all three schools data in that. And our overall arching goals would be for our district to eliminate opportunity gaps, improve school and district performance, and increase educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student. So I'm not going to read through all, of course, all of the needs assessment and all of that. I think that Ms. White is also whenever that would be as well, and all of her documentation and her data that she presented to you earlier. But I would like for you to please go over to the last page, which would say six of six. If you would look under the part that says, electric indicators. Those are the indicators that we, as a district team, at this middle office level, are working toward with our principals that goes throughout the schools. And I'd like to start with the first one, which is CO eight. The district implements and measures the effectiveness of personalized professional development to build the capacity of all educators through coaching, modeling, and network support. I would like to break this space by saying, this is my third year, here working in Grand County Schools. I've been up here for two years for central office. And I can tell you that we have a great outstanding district. This is the year. Everyone works together. I know Mr. Matheson's thought processes put people in a lot of places. We install people in a lot of places. We work together really well. We are working to help provide coaching as we, as needed throughout the school district, this three different schools. And you will hear that further from Jim Salz and Stuart and Kevin, as they go over their school. Providing modeling, recognizing the needs of our students as well as our teachers, and making sure that they get the professional development that they need, that they are asking for. We are making sure as a district team that we're trying to provide that and seek those opportunities for, it's not only our students to grow, but our professional staff to grow. And we also have a great network of support, as you've seen, through this beginning of the school year and passing through the summer. We have added on some outstanding professionals who are helping us along this effort, such as Jim Salz, Brandon Sutton, Terry Queen, Paige Bowe. There's numerous ones that have, are on board with us, helping us as we address the needs of each school. So I feel like, you know, we are well on our way with CO eight, with our network of support and our professional development that's being provided. And our, one of our main ideals for this year that we want to work with our staff is to be able to coach and model, model in our school systems, not just tell, but provide those professional needs and developments that they need. Going on, I would like to skip down where I also read CTE. The district development supports a comprehensive professional development plan centered around district-wide teaching and learning initiatives. And those are kind of the same CO eight and CTE, and they correlate together in practice two B. So I'll skip down to, under practice four A. Build a strong community intensely focused on student learning. E O one. The LEA was born in its culture towards shared responsibility and accountability. We have that this school year. There is shared responsibility, is taking all of us to work together as a team from the district level all the way down. We are in the schools like we've never been before, but the district team is, we're in there every day. We have shared responsibility, and we are accountable. Each one of us are accountable for the role that we have and the role that we play in the school system. Very pleased with that, to see that with Mr. Movie, Mr. Matheson, and our district team. There is that shared responsibility and accountability for all of us, as well as, as we spare, as everyone else. So, E O two. Team structure for the district and schools is officially incorporated into our district policy. The three, all district and school teams prepare agendas for their meetings and keep minutes of their meetings. We are doing that, we're aware, we're aware of that and working toward that now, to where we have agendas for our district team meetings. We have not had that in place before, so we know, we're prepared for what we want to talk about. We have meetings of those meetings, and they are, when we meet, they're for a defined purpose, to accomplish what we need accomplished during the meeting. So, C O one, just secret tenant, celebrate each of your team at district school successes, especially related to student learning outcomes. That is another indicator this year that we are working and striving for with the school district plan. And the E O three, which falls under solicitor, not upon stakeholder input. The district establishes a two-way communication channel to encourage transparency, feedback loops, and access to information for families and the community. Think we're doing as a district, a district team, we did online. We do have two-way communication. Mr. Movie and Mr. Matheson, this degree there is a lot of transparency. There's a lot of shared information, and we know what's happening, we're on the same page, and we're on our, you know, we're in good improvement of the whole district. We'll have our people there to see that, there's feedback loops, working, making sure that our families, our community, we have opportunities and making sure we're sharing information with them all the time. So I'm very happy to report that. So we're already, where the indicators for the district has chosen, we're already making a lot of improvement in those areas. It's already happening, a lot of great things are happening. I think that our district has a code in the right direction, we're headed in the right direction, and there's a lot of support in place. Communication has disappeared. We said that request on time, communication disappeared, and we have it better now than we've had. We are communicating, we are sharing information, and we all are one together for the support of our children and our school system. So, and we are addressing teacher concerns as they come in, and family concerns as they come in. And I can't stress that enough, because I've seen it, the, from the summer since we started gathering and working together with all the other professionals as well, and all of our district team meetings is happening in our school systems every day as we go up and down. Every district leader is, through all the schools, all preschools, hearing and listening, openly listening, actively listening to teacher concerns, principal concerns, family concerns. And so I'm pleased to report that all these, that is our direction as a district, as we've been at the school year. So now you're on our each school. Any questions?
Well, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
With the state law, I've, 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 I mean, is that there, at least every two years, there's another more than two years, you can do it every year, developing. And as Miss Miss described, as the process of development was exactly where it's supposed to be. It's a, it's supposed to have essentially like an open meeting sort of a procedure when they decide.
So we do vote.
They go, if they go into closed session, which is what I want to ask, where, we need to talk about someone, we can't drive a little, where we are, what, on, the school safety components. They're supposed to go into closed session, talk about those. Now, that could either be part of this open session plan that you'll approve or not, but it does require approval by the board. You approve the plan, we have approved it. Less so than every two years.
So I need to ask if, if the board needs to discuss.
Yes, for now, it sounds like we're going to have to tell someone.
Yeah, they still just got to talk about that, the individual has to do that. So. But I want to.
You could, you could vote on all at once. We'll talk a little bit more about the procedures that all do the same portion, because those are all closed session for, for school board, as well as the school program. The, the public parts of the plan, you can go ahead and talk about, if they're ready to present in that.
Mr. White, do you want to present yours?
I guess I'll sit over here. We've got you a PowerPoint presentation ready for this, but, you know, again, the elementary school improvement plan is, you're in the process to do every year. Go ahead and start. Of course, you know, it's state mandated, organization proposed, and elected by Robbinsville Elementary Staff and Parents. We've got an excellent group of our staff that was elected this year. Basically, you'll see at the end the names of the folks that are on our team, but we have a representative for every, every grade level. We have coaches, representatives, we have, of course, Randy and myself, everything, we're a parent, Maria Shug is on our, on our team. And of course, Mr. Salz is also on our team. We have a really good team of people that are coming together, working real hard on this, on this point, so, but go ahead. So now, you know, the indicators, you know, there's a big long list of indicators, and of course, we have worked through as a team to try to look at our data and try to figure out exactly where we need to vote in this year. As we've picked, I think it's five different indicators that we are currently working on for this school year. And our plan, of course, is we, we hope to be able to say that we have fully set at least three of those. And so we'll get into the indicators now at this point. All right, so the first indicator that we, as a team, have chosen to work on is A one point zero seven, which all teachers employ effective classroom management and reinforce classroom rules and procedures by positively, positively teaching them. What we have done for this goal is, you know, in year, well, actually, last year, last whole year, we implemented the Responsibility Standard Discipline Plan, and so we have went, had something that's already been done. And through that also, we have also employed a behavior intervention support staff. But you guys remember, we, we did that, it was summer. So that's already been done. What we're currently doing for now, at this point in time, is, now, there's, there's a lot to RCD. And, you know, there's a big learning curve for all of us, you know, teachers, myself, administration, all of us, there's a big learning curve. But basically, while RCD all comes back to is teaching students how to manage their own behavior and, you know, taking responsibility for their actions. And so, you know, it's, it's a big learning curve, something that we are currently working on. So as of right now, we're creating brood, brooders, as to what should be handled in the office, or what should be handled in the classroom. That type of things, we're completing RCD training modules there at the very beginning of the year. You know, some of the folks from RCD came into the whole full staff training with us. We're implementing RCD behavior matrix, we're, we're starting to implement that behavior matrix, and we're continually teaching routines and practices with the students. What we plan on continuing to work on for the rest of the year, of course, we're on more professional development with RCD model. I have Emily, we're currently working with her, being able to give it, you know, we're currently working with her, but try to bring her back in, and she just wants to come in and do some observations in store, and see how she, if she's actually going, and see how she can help us. As well as Mr. Salz is, would like to do some professional control theory trainings with us as well. And of course, we know we're going to continue to work to effectively track behaviors in infinite campus, and infinite, infinite emphasis that's totally new for us, it's our new student information system. But basically, everything that involves a behavior at Robbinsville Elementary School is going into infinite campus, or we could fully track, you know, type of behavior, what's going on. And then, now, we've have here incentives focused on student behaviors. That's something that I truly want my school improvement team, the all the input on this, you know, this. And so basically, we're, that's something that we're currently working through, trying to figure out, you know, exactly what the reports and statistics should look like once we're done. And so that's the first indicator, so on, second one. Second one was A two point zero four. Instructional teams develop standard lines, units of instruction for each subject in grade level. So what has been done for that indicator? We have set a PLC, set it for the entire year. All of our teams are meeting PLCs weekly. And we are, what we're currently doing is we're working with our PLCs to strengthen our core instruction. Of course, most of that is, you know, looking at data and kind of deep into data. We'll talk a little bit more about, you know, where our data sources are coming from here in just a moment. But we'll work with our PLCs there to help, help strengthen our core, and of course, participating in PD opportunities to improve instruction. Things that we're going to be working on, you know, we want to make sure that we are creating pacing guides for, for reading and math. So basically, you know, what's going on in one first grade classroom is the same thing that's going on in another classroom. They're staying, you know, at least within a few days of each other, and, and all that good stuff. We're working on these pacing guides. And then, of course, you know, we're going to continue to collaborate in our vision PLCs to strengthen our core. Because that is where, you know, core is where the majority of the learning task force is, we've got, strengthen our core as much as possible. Go ahead. Our next indicator is A four point zero one. The school implements a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned with individual needs of students across all tiers. All right, so what we have done is we have identified our screening tools, which, you know, for reading, we, of course, state asks us to use in class. And that's where a lot of our data is coming from, but we're using our PLCs in class, and then for math is I read. So there's where, that's, that's the tools that we are using as universal screeners. Of course, we have already went through the BOY process, gathered data for this year. You know, in, in class and already was completed by. So we did something like that. And so, you know, we've already taken that data, we've already actually took to our PLCs and then threw that out of our PLCs. And Ms. Mintz has helped us with creating a referral form for exceptional children. And then we have established the MTSF school leadership team, which actually, this is supposed to be Randy, myself, and Mr. Salz, and our coaches. And so we're constantly taking a look at that, and see how we can, that's how our features. What we are doing is we're using our, well, I guess I just kind of mentioned that, but our, our MTS team is, of course, using that as a means of focusing on the individual needs of students by exploring academic and behavior interventions. We are currently also in the process of doing professional development as far as our interventions goes. You know, we are using number worlds of math and foundations for, for our reading interventions. And so we have been doing trainings with those, with our teachers and our, our staff that assess student interventions. And of course, progress monitoring is ongoing, and that will continue to go out throughout the year. And that data that we get from those progress monitoring tools will help us make decisions as far as who needs to add to interventions, who needs to enter interventions, and basically, are our interventions working, and how do we need to change those? What steps, what we're going to do coming up. North Carolina Department of Public Construction has some really good training modules on the MTSF tools. And so, you know, we would like for, for all of our staff to start completing those training modules. We're also, Ms. Mintz, we're going to ask her to come around to ELC here sometime soon, and, and basically just make sure that all of our staff understand exactly, you know, the needs of the referral process. And, you know, the data that's required, and, you know, why these interventions, that, why, why the interventions and the data that we're getting, there's important. And of course, we want to develop a matrix of interventions for ELA, as well as. Our next indicator that we are currently working on is B three one oh three. The principal monitors curriculum and classroom instruction regularly and provides timely, clear, constructive feedback features. So what we have already accomplished for this year is we have created a teacher observation schedule. Mr. Matheson, maybe you're a little upset with me, we try to sit through it as much as we can. But you know, things did, this come up like hurricanes in those schools. And that's cool, and I actually died, missed the three observations in the last several days, but we'll get those completed this absolutely soon. But we do have a, an observation schedule completed. Teachers have also completed the instructional development survey. Now, I've got that just here in just a moment. What we're currently doing, you know, is we're conducting regular database with the teachers, as I mentioned there before. Between the leadership team, Randy, myself, and coaches, we are working extremely hard to try to do weekly walkthroughs. Something that I felt from the very beginning is that our teachers need to make sure they see us in their classrooms every week. And so we're, we're trying our best to get in, in and out of classrooms and try to, well, first of all, I needed to learn myself, you know, I mean, I spent twenty-eight and a half years in education, and most others spent in high school, most were left. So a lot of times I needed to be in there myself, just to kind of learn, you know, about the elementary classroom. And so, but we're, we're going to continue to do these walkthroughs, and we're going to make a commitment to try to make sure that we're in every classroom every week. What, what needs to come next? Of course, we are working to, to develop a walkthrough. Of course, we are working, uh, to, to develop a walkthrough tool. Uh, we've got one and there's just a few things that I want to tweak on it and stuff, but you know, we want to make sure that we have exactly what we need is going to fit our needs of elementary schools. Um, of course, again, we're, uh, in our weekly PLCs and data meetings, we're, uh, working to address the needs, uh, that we see, uh, in our, in our classroom observations. And, uh, develop a creative PD plan to make instructional meetings. Now, in our, in our latest, uh, PLC, uh, we did form an exit ticket. We asked our teachers, you know, to, to let us know what are you needing? And so, uh, there's where, you know, uh, some of the data that we're going with and we're, we're starting to get, but at this point in time, just like with the district plan, we're just talking about mental reading coaching and, and things like that, you know, we, we got a lot of great responses from our teachers because you know, quite honestly, if your teacher saw this for a long, long time, that's all you see, that's all you know. And so we're working and trying our best and we want to make this happen where, uh, we get teachers to be able to go out and observe with the same lesson or the, or the same foundations or Henry's or, or CPLAs or open up or, you know, whatever they need to sharpen your skills on, make sure that we are able to get those into another classroom where they can see other people, uh, you know, doing the same thing that they're, that they're trying to do. And so, you know, that's one of the things that I felt very strongly about, that we need to make sure that teachers have the opportunity to do so. Also, um, you know, a lot of our teachers seeing that, uh, survey results are basically asking for our coaches to come in and model. And so, you know, of course, we're working with our, our, our reading and math coaches just to go in classrooms and show, uh, you know, how a lesson, you know, like for instance, my wife, my, I know she's already done this with, uh, with first grade, we're going to just basically show, you know, how an open up lesson should run. And so I know the general teachers are really, uh, excited about crystal, I'm going to come in and model them as well. So, uh, but there's a lot of good things, you know, coming from those survey results. So, go ahead. And then, uh, I guess our final, uh, indicator that we have, uh, selected for this year is E one point oh zip, one point zero six. The school regularly communicates with parents and guardians about what its expectations of them and the importance of the curriculum over the home, what parts, what parents can do at home supports their children's learning. So what we have done is we know that basically every grade level, uh, has some sort of communication method that they, that they utilize to communicate with parents, whether it be with class dojo or remind out or, you know, multiple different things. Uh, so that has been, that, that is something that has been done. Uh, what we are recording, of course, are having and currently are doing, uh, sending progress reports home, uh, parent interview conferences. Uh, we do have a Robbinsville Elementary Facebook page that, uh, Satterfield does and does a great job with. Uh, there's all the time, especially in the younger grades, uh, classroom minutes left is going out, uh, essentially monthly. And, uh, then of course, you know, from time to time, well, actually I've only made two at this point in time, but, uh, periodic off-class student in the cameras. Um, now what we need, what we know we need to work on for the rest of the year is we would like to, uh, do a survey with our parents to determine what's working and what's not. You know, how, how can we help, uh, communicate with, with parents? Uh, provide parent instructional resources, you know, like the, the CPLA, the reading, uh, curriculum that we use, the open up, uh, math curriculum that we use, have great parent tools. And so it's just basically figuring out how to get those, uh, those tools into, or into their parents' hands. And so of course, uh, the last thing there, being collaborative with parents too, uh, about consistency, uh, about our communication methods. And so the next slide, you can see our team members and there, there's who we are. Uh, also have EC represented on our team. We've got a great team that's working extremely hard. Uh, pleased to have Mr. Salz working with us. Uh, there is, uh, connections, grand stronger connections grant, uh, in, in the asset pool as well, so. But that's the main indicator that we are working in and work on what we're doing, what we're trying to be doing, work instead of the life.
Excellent presentation. I appreciate that. Hey, Ms. Sawyer. I'm, there you go.
So I'm here, uh, going to high school, but Mr. Brooks is down the chamber of the school committee. So these are a lot of the plans on the work and the
Oh, okay.
So, um, last year was a, a very good year on the law school. Um, we've seen good growth last year in our regard for our U C stores. Our subcategories were all very good as well. Um, this year our focus is going to be to improve our ACT and ACT working scores. And we see the records for those things in our school, once we've planned, we've done through that. Uh, the, uh, the new parts we've added to the, uh, plan are going to be centered around the ACs. ACT, um, attendance and, and um, and those things are, uh, the new parts of the plan are highlighted in your copy. So I was in here with, um, the first new part of the plan is on page four. We're going to do our, uh, I go to pages one point zero seven. And, uh, the school has developed attendance incentives to report students that display good attendance. Um, we want to do things to, uh, you know, reward students as well as bring up, uh, on social. Uh, when fully implemented, the cell students will be mindful of these incentives and allow better incentives and order to earn rewards. Um, students who may serve the community and act in a criteria will be exempt from certifying exams. They, that, uh, that's the, the big prize there. Um, it, it obviously can't be the class if it has a state final exam, but, uh, if they make our criteria that we developed, then they're going to get the choice to not pay the teacher-made final exam. Um, also students who are present for every class for three weeks or less will earn an extra lunch pack. They, we've already, they goes out one time, uh, they're ready to go and work the, the last three weeks. Um, and, uh, it gives a lot to get those, so it's, it's hopefully helping and that they've got to be there for every class, excuse them, excuse doesn't matter, they've got to be present for every single class for those three weeks.
Does that mean they get to go off campus to eat?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that count, like, that's how it can be played?
Yes. Over on page five. This is under, under QC three point zero four. Um, the, uh, the new part of that's highlighted at the, the middle of the page there. Uh, we're working to implement a teacher of the month reward system that rotates through each department. And each department at some point during the year is going to be recognized on a board or a hall. Uh, it's just another way of, uh, going through some morale, recognize each department, uh, as well as students throughout the school. Next, under QC two point zero one. Uh, for the top of the page there, EVOS data, which is our testing data, uh, will be evaluated at each school's DLC with demonstration. Um, so there's already that we're developing the departments and I'm going to be, the other departments and there are DPCs that looking into that data and see what, what we do as well, what we need to do. Next, under C two point oh three there, page six, actually on page seven, it's a new part of that. Um, for the, uh, for the top of the page, um, all ELA science and social studies teachers will participate in reading apprenticeship training. And ELA science, social study teachers will share learned practices with teachers and other subject areas. And, uh, the, uh, reading apprenticeship actually started last year, but we're in second year of the senior program. It, uh, it's a program that's, um, that teaches teachers, um, that's, uh, entrance and reading comprehension and they, uh, and their formal reading activities in the classroom. And, uh, next is down at the bottom there. Under T three point zero eight. Uh, here's where we're getting into the, the ACT part of this. Uh, the hospital will create an ACT team to work with teachers and grandparents who are specific to ACT. Beginning teachers, we're, we're, um, developing that team, apparently. Beginning teachers will receive coaching from an in-state university. That's a program that, uh, it's through the Gera grant and, uh, beginning teachers are going to get, uh, some coaching from someone at the university there, uh, and, and they're going to be able to watch their class and, uh, give kind of feedback immediately after the classes. Um, to support that, be a good thing. Uh, the hospital will have a group of teachers joining after the breath or the fed or facilitate ACT practice. Um, after the breath is a program we're going to use for several years and it's the, and they say anything important, you know, you could feature something you can use in their class that will be as good as ACT. On page eight. Um, page three point zero one. Uh, about three quarters of the way down, administrators will attend our DLC meetings, most of the way before we get to that one. And that's just for us to be able to reach the bar up there and, uh, we just found a major inventory of ones of anybody. Page twelve. Eighty two point zero seven. We have some more things in there about, uh, reading apprenticeship. That's all departments will implement, implement reading apprenticeship activities and strategies in their classroom. That is all the one, all the teachers. Um, and those departments are, they're seeing trying to get at the teachers level and everyone is, uh, is, is implementing that. It seems to be working really well, especially the, the, with the, with the department. Um, these departments will review lessons and strategies during the DLC, determine if most effective and successful, which is what, you know, Sharon on peers and their member. Um, department ads will meet with CTU and land departments to determine whether reading apprenticeships are used to do that with our lessons. Those are the departments that are not included in the actual, uh, reading apprenticeship training. This is the way to kind of get that across department and all, uh, benefit from that as well. On page thirteen. This is page one point zero nine. School improvement team will review participation data for clubs and will bear this data with sponsors to encourage greater participation among less active members. A Google sheet will be created, tracks students involved across all clubs. We've already created the Google sheet and it's just clear up a thing where we want these all kids to be involved in something. It's just to kind of help identify and make sure, you know, all kids have some love or activity to take part in the school. It's just our way of kind of organizing and tracking that. And just to make sure students are, you know, involved in something. Have that opportunity to do this. Um, on the next page, which is the fourth thing, it's under A four point one four. Um, teacher mentors will start our students, mentors will be assigned to students quarterly and what state opinion is needed. It, it's just to get kids of, uh, someone like specified that they could go through, you know, needs or eyes, kind of still in here. And we've done things like this before and, uh, the teachers are excited to see that come back. On page sixteen. This is under A four point one six. Um, this is God's opposite name. Uh, students will create a career plan in eighth grade and revisit that plan in tenth grade. So the only new part of this goal and it's to, uh, allow students to kind of have that in their mind, you know, to follow the track if they're, you know, have a certain career in their mind. They can completely see if you can laugh way or, uh, something like that regarding to that. So those check is the eighth and tenth grade, those are the ones where we think is most necessary to make, to see where they're at for that good. Page eighteen. This is under A four point zero six. Uh, it's for the physical safety and, uh, and all that stuff there and the, uh, part there is because by teachers aware of services available to receive exam itself as far as, you know, young adults, sport and things like that happen. And um, page nineteen, A two point zero one. At the bottom. Um, before COVID, we have, uh, parent advisory committee and we are trying to bring that app this year. So the bottom of new parent representatives will be invited to the thing for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. To place the parent's role there to, and teacher leadership plan will be monthly with district administrations to address concerns and increase district by community. And that's, that's already been, uh, going on with, uh, with, with teacher leadership presentation committee. Page twenty one. This is under C eight one point zero six. Dallas department was able to see here and that resource page for all grant collection scholarships and college application. Uh, when, for this resource page, we share with parents throughout the year. That is something that, that is in place. I got ridiculous, um, thought there where that's the chair for the guy supposed to stay here. Um, and the next one there is back to parents by other committee, the administrator from A B C, the parent advisory committee is getting into it. So that's, uh, current concerns of parents. Those were the, uh, highlights, the new parts, there are some more words to plan, the last one. Anyone have any questions?
Appreciate all of your attention. All right, do I have a motion to Oh, I'm sorry. So I overlooked. A shout in.
Wow. Wow. For roasting here.
Sorry.
He tastes for, he's forgiven. He's not too far off. He's close, so.
So I think we have stayed off this topic of our conference pitch before. It's the whole old school, good time for, uh, we're going to be kind of going to with, with your office now. We've got a higher order of, we now like to flip those first. So you're not, you know, you're always, it's just book as a BPI, as twelve key indicators that are specifically assessed. Uh, so we went through this, 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 how it was assessed by relevant indicators. We got the school group thing, we chose five that focused on, this is kind of a failed mission. Our goal this year is to to get the completion of course three and O. Uh, and this is the leading document on the client. So hopefully as another student, they accomplish one goal, the one in chair, or they have another one that is still to assess and see if they can, they act, keep walking along the road as we get further. Um, if you see on presentation here, our mission this year, uh, kind of thing will be this year is the vision is to create a structure that supports learning environment that uphold the high standards of excellence, foster accountability, ensures integrity and promotes personal and academic growth for, for our students. Um, that's kind of the word, wordy way of saying that we want to see kids go to the bar raised for academic excellence and achieving the goals of, you know, what they want to achieve. Um, our vision is to, uh, we envision a thriving educational community where excellence, accountability, equity and structure are pillars that guide us. Our goal is equity and structure are pillars that guide us. Our goal is to empower and appreciate our high potential and to find responsible and related and in the fad, I believe, is in the first century. Um that's kind of the, that's what our mission is. Our goals for this year are to increase ed- uh increase educational programs that makes an excellent student. Uh we're doing that through uh in that during the open up responsible and the false amplified E L A for our real school reading curriculum and that's that's been a big help. Just the units of all waiting to see uh take up in our in our structure with that. Uh we want to improve school and major performance. Uh our our school ready for this day, we want to see it go up. Uh and we are performing all that, that, that kind of that is died and I think is the plan so far. Uh and to eliminate opportunity gaps, um we don't want kids to, I don't say have excuse, but we want to know where they're at and get a tool and say, you know, if people are wrong, you want to draw it, you know, no one has a good tool. They didn't. They didn't really scroll around. They just means how certain people are not easily going to get that one, have everybody be part of it. Um uh then we're starting now. That's our, that's the reason for that one. Uh we'll go through these indicators, um the review, they're also in that plan. It might not be for for value exactly, but this is kind of like the highlight of ours though. Um the first indicator is two oh four, eight point four, instruction team, develop standards aligned. Develop standard aligned units of instruction for each setting and grade level. Uh and we're doing that through uh our action here is each team has uh been collaborating with those standards, line instruction. Uh I'm trying to say is going through what states are doing to be taught and line instruction with that. Uh we are including our A C T teachers on this team, the P L Cs. Anything else to make sure that they can get a space for A C R O D and are also getting that appropriate line of instruction as P L C. Uh our staff is known as our partners that we've been, is D P I, we went with D P I itself, I'm building a son. And they uh pointed out some priority standards. Uh if all of you could look at the curriculum, we're not the curriculum, but uh the standard, the standard of Joe Aron. It's very uh massive. So they've, they've identified some priority standards. So like, okay, yeah, there's all these standards with these here, you have to, they're calling. That's, that's what they have to give. So we've identified these standards. We're making sure that our teachers know what those are and they're clear to them, so they're structured. Uh part of the curriculum alive of meets, uh meeting to facilitate, uh and that's what they're like, our P L Cs, we have uh certain areas, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, science, six, seven, eight, nine, all of them together. Nature, while six, seven, coming to speed and then what anybody's knowing and so on. And the small access key, which they'll have a line of things that's going up and that's tradition being how we go there. Uh students are, uh students with simple needs will have a combination provided in the learning. Uh I guess that's why we're even make sure these know what all these things can get uh being taught or what they need to help. Uh lesson plans and other instructional evidences will be filed with the review. Uh uh we call our teachers, you know, we pop into a hall of the one lot. We will end this day and finally get that issue and get up and go on the floor. Uh and A C T, your number seven dinner, neither one of them actually there's uh through the P L Cs. Uh that's something that we continue to develop, um well, it's it's based up here some, all about that here in a little bit. All right, next is uh say uh indicator B three oh three, principal of all of the curriculum and classroom uh instructors to regular. Um the focus of the principal's role in building leadership capacity, achieving learning goals and improving structure. So not just me, myself as the principal, but my team, uh Mr. Austin and his small guys are very big on getting into classrooms. Uh being in our evening, just for the old kids in his pocket, hey, what's up? I pull up the board, they see us, the board of teachers feel supported and the more the students see us, they feel we're invested, most are really uh marked as they were in all of the okay. Um we've got, and by what's in my list mentioned, the principal has a vote and operation schedule uh to provide each, any market, it's kind of similar to what we have said, we all have it best again. But in the middle school, always it's crazy. Uh the one that invests, you don't have the one you're gonna do. You may have the best plan there is. And those good ones, those are just, they thought. Um so our implementation status for this goal, for this indicator is we'll be in the classroom doing drop-ins, operations systematically continuously. Uh we have to walk through uh him with the, we're using, so it's consistent. We get feedback directly through the leaders, we go through. Uh the principal will be both scoring classroom operations and tiny machines that are both announced and hung out. And evaluation of feedback is given to the providers of operation, which was important to use uh this for for formal operation, didn't kind of along, we'll talk about it. Next, um next is key indicator F four oh one. Uh the school implements a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to complete their evidence-based instruction aligned with individual needs uh based on. So what that is, that's N G S S, or that's the self nature, is it's basically identifying where kids are at uh based on universal printer I read, the small apps and also with our system, our guidance. And every kid in middle school, they might assess and live on that. Uh and also none is general classroom. All students uh have been screened and we do P O I, M O Y, I read and all that stuff. Uh and we take that and we're going to see where those kids are at. And then we have A C S time established for us to get interventions where they need most outside of the core instruction. Um the garage, mom and killer have been, have been set up and followed. We know when we're gonna take, getting their setup, they were just just through this effort. It was planned this summer and we stuck our little one in there who was able uh to hold on to our own instructions. Uh students will be offered the appropriate tier of instruction, you also said here in the. Uh now back to the next one, talk more about N G S S, so I'll go to that instead. Uh P L C's been in this time. Uh they just, they two oh three, the school has established a team structure, a team structure among teachers for specific duties. Uh and time for students to learn. That's what the word for you, the U C stands for. We have a time set aside for calendar for teachers to meet and plan. Uh we're pretty back in two oh three and two oh one again because same mindset, you know, head of college, those laws that I can get. Two oh one, it's a special thing to be regularly, at least twice a month, uh forty five days. We actually have to four times a month, three or seven times, twice a month that way. Next, uh to review and to review of the patient of the active practices. So without, we have, like I said, P L Cs to help do this. Uh they're scheduled in place for P L C teams to be every week uh as a whole grade level, we get to meet once a month, gather, swap the entire, it's very interesting to gather one, close a month, same grade, same year, so. Uh teachers keep records and ensure this, that's something we're working towards still, as seen as maybe towards rupture. Uh one thing that's been moving in this to the past, if you had scheduled time for P L Cs, walk on your operator structure, we'll last one for get the goal established in other meetings, have, have a agenda and have, have a focus, reason for that meeting, not with sit down talks. Uh P L Cs will have the agenda, which is to say they will be, they will drive these meetings. Uh posters, they're not, they're not meeting, just the meeting, but they'll have some form of data from either the stringer or uh uh champion, person or something. To say, okay, why are we doing this? What's going on hard? These kids talking, they've got to die this life. So there's some activity they might be wanting to do this part is the, a grab and gossip question. Uh meetings will happen consistently and continuously, like I said, once a month for ten, for, for grade level, once a week for seventeen. P L C meetings will focus on impact, student growth, student progress with monitoring and instruction is, uh is data driven. Uh so that's the purpose of P L Cs, how we use the, the, the. Uh and I mean, I should have been supporting N G S S on the second one, not uh, but uh N G S S, the period and the students and therefore the right. He's actually been branch out, I don't know about this summer already, we've made time in the schedule for uh for launch, we opened up and established when the other ones, yes, and they use part of that time to get interventions uh based on what they actually do, do, do that. So getting on seventh grade or seventh grade and on seventh grade or higher. They will actually get seventh grade math instruction, but then on fifth grade math, then they'll have to have an improvised support that you might, fifth grade, they'll have to be called up at the time. It's not good. Math class, so in math, we just did bring that. And this is our school group of team members, uh with, with the five mission that results, uh with the strong. Having breakfast.
Good presentation. Sorry, I don't want to lose all time. Sure, um I like. Our bottom says, without a nation, the people's in trouble. Uh it's not start player. I think it's a clear end of the day. This is our business strategy in school. That's a clear reason for your schools and I also play publicly, I appreciate all the hard work you do. It's to have a season, it's to have the bench to share through with it, got your teachers on board. Uh I really think this is good things are gonna happen and take place in the future. So I do appreciate all the tools. He's probably gonna wipe your saving, Jim Socks, who was behind the scenes, but he's been with us for months, months now. I don't know if he wants to give up his speech or not, but uh he gets a chance to meet him, he's, 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 he's been a lot, he's helped us in the other areas. So we're often amused, so I appreciate him too, but I can't say enough about our school. It's my, I just want to thank y'all. Do a job later. That is touching.
And I'm just gonna say these were three excellent presentations, Sam, Chris, this one is really good. I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve the school improvement plans, approval, president's hand missing. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any vote? Okay, safe schools, evaluation drill, Mr. Moody.
Uh evacuation drill. Uh I said Megan Claire and then start uh runicidal, I suppose, everybody sort of, that's the school safety, especially what happened down Georgia. Uh yearly, annually, we do practice uh evacuation drills and you mean unlocking unfortunate of emergencies. So October twenty nine, twenty four, uh we're going through full-scale evacuations in conjunction with emergency emergencies with Grand County. It also works with the sheriff's office and other entities within our county. And it's just gonna be a full-scale drill, so you see any idea if there is and you can't see events, emergency, there's what's to do. Your only is do is watch your practice. So I'll give that out there, just that, no, this is the safe ways, it's not an emergency. It's just going for the practice. So uh that's all. That's about our, should y'all have any questions about that?
Personnel, Miss Wiggins, hiring and approval.
Good morning. I would have forgotten Mr. Moody here with the fact that information that you will bring to the conference session in the dark of what you will be working on today is coaching decisions, otherwise you can bring that to your position.
Calendar waiver update, Mr. Moody.
Uh yes, uh we, y'all voted on the uh sending the waiver to the state at the last meeting and even turned down, took us not having enough days. Uh even leaving early or out in the weather. So uh for the state standards, that's some changes we have, students have to start a week later than what they had in the last few months. So it's more to be, a heads up.
And activity bus loan approval.
Yes, we, we definitely need that to be licensed and 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 tested, I'm sure. Uh but uh there are also a hundred fifty thousand pounds of pace, they've looked at fifty percent, sixty thousand, twenty two, is that right? So the only way to obtain it is through, uh it's paying that loan uh for ten years and to make it feasible. But uh the county voted out of the passive loans through us, so I would like the board to vote to approve this going forward. With getting this loan so we can acquire those two activity buses, uh for our skills.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the school getting a loan for the two activity buses. So yeah, I have a second. Thank you. Yeah, uh all in favor? Any vote? Yeah, so you can go forward with that. That's lucky. All right, you, Robbinsville Elementary student update.
And I'll be telling you also that that things going on and uh the one that's facing the face and our, our prayers go out to the hill and uh there is some good news, good news for us tonight, you know, it's, it's sort of catch me telling that like this. Some, they're certainly be proud of that, but the face of what's going on, I don't know. Uh Sam, two thousand, but I just so happened to be at Kramer's Saturday, worked on, at least I could find the internet table. Just so happened to get a message from a chat from, from Rob and uh so I called back. This is probably somebody who's going to leave the I, she said, you know, I said, this is Cassie, she said, this is Cassie, of course, I said, sorry, do I know you? At least let me know, she's a state super jet.
That's correct, yes. Who I.
Yes, we, we're not going on, you know, speaking about within our.
George, a fool.
So yeah, I just, you know, that's the way of the world, I don't hear. Uh as far as school goes, it's just, it's just, it's fine, I'm giving up. So, but anyway, she said, asked how we're doing. But she said, I saw what Charlie said, unofficially, that uh we've got the grant of new stool for the fourteen new uh. Though officially, now, like I said, this is a lot of the stress that's going on. Like I said, I, they've got their plans in place, so that, so. And and again, I can appreciate that, you know, everybody that was involved in this, this has been a vision for eight to nine, for several years. The problem's getting land hurt and jamming for a couple of years now, we're writing grants, the same grant. Uh Dr. Weber took over this year with the grant and and wrote it and then that's, you got David and and uh Calvin and Patrick, it's logistics, uh the land and she's, we're gonna show more about this in a closed session about the division of our schools, about how it's needed and maybe steps up with have kept some contact with their salesmen who's over to uh construction projects and account and uh Brandon Sutton, who's our D P I representative, since also obviously one of the team, has got some touch with the overall engineers. And uh through this group effort, there was over a hundred and twenty something applications applied for new school in State of Carolina and we got them and so that's a team effort and I appreciate it, what they've done. It's certainly good news and we're gonna go forth with it. Commissions, again, we'll talk about this in a closed session about, but uh where do we go from here? So I do appreciate it, my, you know, efforts and what they've done. So, but that's, that's.
Okay, board policy, Mr. He.
Chairman, I apologize in all of the craziness, but I'm sitting here trying to think why my threat warrant is so darn sore. It doesn't hold a change of salt in the past. Yeah, I, I don't have policy. I have policies for either sitting on a server that is completely dark. So I will get policies to you and also we're maybe saving on a closed session just so you can read the closed session minutes. I'm gonna have those up for you by then. It's gonna be like reading Warren Beaks, but we're gonna get there on that point today.
All right.
Do you also live in Nashville?
I live in Weaverville.
Yeah, he says, wow, I'm sure it's like devastation there. You know, you and your family and your loved ones, okay?
Thank you for asking, Mr. Moody. We're blessed, we're fine. We um, we had a bunch of trees go down around our house. Uh they kind of fell in ways that just children even happen. There's one that one, one tree had fallen this way and two others fell across in ways that I think they would have hit us if it wasn't for the one that went down, one that were near. Deflected the other two in ways that just, you know, just out of nature. Um we had one hit the house while we were, we were up and waited about ten minutes. Um and the one fell over and hit us and scared us to death. And that's the back of the house where the kids uh sleeps. We moved them into the, the bonus room and had none of us that day. But none of us thought we were gonna get into the tree either. Um we were fine. We didn't have power. We're not gonna have power for probably the rest of the week. Um so my uh wife and kids, you can go with the air folks, breathe them anyway. Uh since they're out of school all week, stay with them and gone. Uh I'm in Franklin, stayed there last night, they had still sat there. So and and they didn't get really so bad and y'all didn't either. I, I still wanna see how this storm worked because I don't really understand how it's supposed to get Atlanta and how to get from Atlanta and not get here so as bad and get the bumping point yet. I just don't understand.
We're in the act.
I guess so, but you forget, I can get hit twice. I don't know. I, I don't, I've heard that too, but I don't, I just don't, I don't know. It's just been crazy uh the old days and honestly, it's still good to be in Florida. I've never been more glad. Yeah, and those, those places, and that is where all the prayers need to go. Those places, one of our um attorneys, that's just want to know, uh she's up. And those, those places, and that is where all the prayers, you know, it's those places, one of our, um, attorneys, she's, she's one of Noah, she's up, um. She's up the hill, and those get up, come in the night, I was drowned enough that kids there didn't have power, didn't have terrible, I mean, just thinking. And now, we literally walk out and go and try to save one of their daughters who lives in Raleigh. And, um, places like that are just, and, and, um, I know it's, the war area was, you know, I think they thought they had, after it was two thousand and three, four, when. When that flood happened and it's worse. I can't believe, I, I've got a neighbor who's son, who was at the, one of the hotels down there, is in, uh, in Delphore. And I've seen pictures now with water, it's, it's, wow, it's such a cruel. Town marshal was wrong, um, when that's, she friends with a, so it was, uh, in Assis County. Uh, we were like, we were blessed, we were, we were fine, uh, we're gonna throw away a whole bunch of food, um, initially, but, um, you know, we're, we're okay. Um, I, I appreciate it.
Good thoughts. Well, it was, we're keeping our prayers and, and, of course, if you can see us not block her as well, we have a lot of need, our help and working up now, making vice of deal. And this is the recovery, their whole recovery process, play the safety and I know there's, 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 they're safe and we'll, we'll keep it under our six.
And you mentioned last board meeting about not, not having to read dog. Conversation.
Dogs aren't so sucky.
She's, she's got them, they're silent, it's about it.
Well, I'm happy to do it for you, and, and, for, for, for this site, reasons for closed session, for those that have, this, three dash, three, one, one, ladies. One, prevent slugging, uh, information is clearly confidential, to the safe law, that's being, yes, one, three, C dash, uh, three nineteen, three point one for personnel. Um, also under one, uh, one forty three, that's eighteen, one one, eighty three, concerned with attorney, there's attorney, private privilege. And under one forty three, thirteen, one one eighty five, uh, concerning acquisition real problem.
Yeah, I have a second.
Second.
We're doing closed session. All right, Mr. Moody, uh, action items.
Personnel, I'd like to present, uh, list the hall for, 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 for century, group assistance, most of our coaches and volunteers to be approved.
Do I have a motion to approve personnel presented, uh, to a closed session? And we will give you a list, uh, Charlotte. So, do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, now, uh, we have, uh, one other thing, uh, Mr. Hitting, uh, needs to give us an update on the sale. Uh, two properties in Stokoa near Wolf Creek.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I filed this, I've been this long, you've attended before, but we did run through the, I said, did process for those two parcels. So, uh, the original owner, the price of thirty thousand dollars, my health, uh, wasn't, um, I'm sitting in the file. Did talk to somebody who said she was interested and was, and sent her form to send me and we'll have to do a lot, I mean, she called back and said she wasn't gonna make, uh, an asset given, so. Um, I would have loved to have had a contract for you to look at and approve today, I don't, um, but, well, I will ask you, go ahead and do. Yes, that entertainment motion to approve purchase price of thirty thousand dollars and authorize, uh, board chairs who intended to, uh, execute documents, the move itself. Who's who, that, that covers, we won't need to come back.
Do I have a motion to approve the thirty thousand dollar bid of the two properties, uh, in Stokoa at Wolf Creek? So, yeah, I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we can go forward with that, much. All right, uh, announcements, Mr. Moody.
Uh, there is, like, seven, next four things, we'll be November fifth.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor? Amber Dan.
Ten A M.
Ten A M, yes.